Welcome to the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address the commission on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the commission. Please hand in your completed card to a city staff member. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact the staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The commission secretary will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting stream live on YouTube and online at goodyearaz.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Planning and Zoning Commission on December 3rd meeting is now called to order. Will you please stand and join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary note the roll?
Commissioner Roberts is present. Commissioner Hegidis is present. Commissioner Wang is present. Commissioner Nepomucino is present. Vice Chair Sambito is present. Chairman Clymer is present. Commissioner Booth is absent. At this time, we will take a vote to excuse members unable to attend due to extenuating circumstances. Is there a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner Booth from the meeting? Are you able to make a motion? Thank you. Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Wang, a second from Commissioner Hegidis. Having fun with my computer right now, so I'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, now's the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Are there any speaker cards?
I've not received any for non-agenda items.
Anyone in the audience want to speak on a non-agenda item? Will the secretary please read the items on the consent agenda?
Absolutely. Approval of minutes. Approval of the 2026 Planning and Zoning Commission calendar. Hopefully this works now. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion from Commissioner Nepomucino and a second from Commissioner Roberts. Please enter your vote. And how do you vote, Commissioner Clymer?
I can't. I'm gonna vote aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, this is an opportunity for commission members to disclose any ex parte communications they may have had prior to this meeting on any items scheduled for discussion on this agenda. Ex parte communication is any outside communications commissioners may have had regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone? Okay, before we get into the business, I'd like to make an announcement. Some of you may be leaving here shortly. Unfortunately, this is going to be the last meeting that our vice chairman Maria Sambito will be present. She and her husband Mark will be moving out of state to be near grandbabies, I think. Is that right? So, we've enjoyed working with her. She's really a great commissioner and the staff was going to make a presentation towards the end of the meeting. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you. My pleasure.
There's four public hearing items on the agenda tonight. And as a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommendation board for the council. The commission will vote on each item and forward the recommendation to council. Council makes the final decision on all items. Agenda item number three is the Celebration Plaza rezone. We're gonna open public hearing. Senior Planner Justin Gabrielson will present. Good evening. And there were some late amendments and I'm sure you're gonna make it all clear for us so that we're not thinking about something a little different vein than we should be, so.
Good evening Chairman Clymer and Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Justin Gabrielson, senior planner here with the city of Goodyear. I'm here before you this evening with a request from Mark Ready to amend the previously approved PAD known as Celebration Plaza. The site is located at the northwest corner of West Celebrate Life, Lifeway, and North Litchfield Road. It is currently zoned PAD under the Celebration Plaza PAD. It encompasses 66.6 acres of land and contains a mixture of underlying uses. You have seen this project presented to you before. On March 12th, 2025, I brought this item to you. You voted five to zero to forward your recommendation of approval to the city council. However, at the city council meeting on March 24th, due to some concerns from city council, the applicant decided to withdraw this application with the intent on making a few additional changes and presented at a later date. We received the current PAD in review back in September. As I mentioned, the Celebration Plaza PAD contains a mixture of underlying uses and we can see those underlying uses here on this map. We also are able to see the location of the site with the surrounding area with Interstate 10 to the north, Palm Valley Crossing to the east, Palm Gate to the south, Airport Gateway to the west, and City of Hope tucked into the corner. The first amendment proposed by the applicant is a recommended or is a proposed amendment for the drive-throughs. Currently Celebration Plaza has a restriction of only one drive-through allowed on the entire site. However, the applicant is requesting that the language is changed and amended to allow up to three where one is required to be a stand, uh, one is required to be an end cap drive-through. An additional amendment brought in with the new PAD is a parking requirement reduction. Currently Celebration Plaza follows the same parking requirements as the city of Goodyear. They are asking for a reduction in the medical office parking requirements that is currently at one space for every 150 square feet of medical office building. Their request is to decrease that to one space for every 200 square feet. This is a similar ratio that we see in other jurisdictions across the valley. And here we can actually see a medical office campus with a hospital that utilizes the one space per 200 square feet. Staff has created three options for your recommendation. Option one, seen as staff's recommendation, is to approve the proposed ordinance as is, which will contain stipulation 21. The results of this will reduce the medical office parking and will keep the drive-through restriction the same as one standalone. Option two is to approve the ordinance without stipulation 21, which will see the, which will see the decrease in medical office parking as well as allow the three drive-throughs with one being an end cap. Option three is to deny the application, which retains the current existing zoning with no changes. If Planning and Zoning Commission also wants to propose a fourth option, we are open to that. That concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions. The applicant is also here with their own presentation as well as available for questions.
Uh, my question to you is, um, the, the, the change in the number of parking. So that is outside of the zoning ordinance. So are we setting a precedent to do that? Which contradict the provision of zoning ordinance?
Several PADs do make changes to the city of Goodyear zoning ordinance and some do affect the parking. So this wouldn't be something that we haven't seen before.
So will this necessitate a change in the zoning ordinance now?
No, this only changes the Celebration Plaza PAD.
I understand that, but other, other application may come in in the future with, you know, cite the same instances. So we, basically in my opinion, we're setting a precedent here because we're trying to, um, look at the recommendation to approve this despite the fact that, um, the, uh, the change in the parking is outside of the zoning regulation. The other thing is, if I recall, when this was approved back in, in March, there was one drive-through. And in fact, from what I read, the city council had a concern about this. And in fact, they were thinking about just going back to the original, uh, approval back in 2023. So the applicant, I guess, withdrew this application so they can come back and resubmit it like today. But the thing is, now they're asking for three drive-throughs, which is contrary to the preference of the city council.
So the difference is that currently there was no limit on the drive-throughs. There was a limit on the standalone in the previous, uh, in the previous amendment. Now they are putting a limit at three. There was, um, it was a limit of standalones with unlimited end caps and now it's a limit of three where one is required to be an end cap. So they're no longer given the unlimited option, but they will still be required to provide an end cap.
Can you go back to the drawing where it shows the difference zone? Right there. What's the rationale for putting the commercial office in the back instead of in the front?
I would rather the applicant answer that question.
That's what caught my eye, so typically of the commercial in the, in the front and not in the rear of the property.
Uh, this is Mark Ready. He can answer that question for you.
I'll tell you what, uh, I think Maria's got some questions for staff. Is that right? And then the applicant can answer your question when he comes up, okay?
Justin, for the rest of us up here, can you summarize what council's concerns were with what we approved or moved forward?
Yeah, um, councils were, uh, councils' concerns were about the drive-throughs. I think the unlimited end cap number was the most concerning part of it, which is understandable. We have seen some sites across the city that do have a few too many drive-throughs and I think that they're trying to prevent that. So I think coming in with putting in a limit with requiring them to do at least one end cap is to kind of put a little bit of ease to that.
And can you reflect once again, going back and forth with the number of drive-throughs on each one, on the three different options that you've prepared for us? Can you reflect on that again for me?
Sure. So option one is to approve or is to forward your recommendation, to approve the ordinance as is, which has stipulation 21.
Does that have any drive-throughs? Does option one have a drive-through? The one?
Yes, it's the limit of one drive-through that is allowed in the current PAD.
Okay.
Option two would to approve the ordinance with the removal of stipulation 21, which would allow for the medical office parking reduction and the increase in drive-throughs. And then option three would be to deny it altogether and keep it the same.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, anyone else for staff?
I, sorry. For the parking, um, remind me for everyone, is there a difference in the Goodyear statute for how much parking for medical compared to other commercial that is required?
Yes, there is a table that gives lists a number of uses of what we've seen and then it gives a ratio of one space required for every 150 square feet or however many depending on the use.
Right, so is, are they looking at when they build this, is it going to be where there's medical and not medical in the same building area?
So the parking itself is associated with the use. So if they were to build a medical office building and then let's say put a diner or like a deli at the, in the first floor, the parking standards for the medical office would be exclusive to the medical office use itself and then the diner parking would be added on top of that. So it would be two different calculations that we would make sure that there's enough parking for both uses.
Okay, I understand that in your presentation you showed a hospital compared to what we have. And this isn't, isn't a hospital, so hospital medical parking is very different than standalone medical parking. As far as a comparison with being able to have parking. So if you have a medical, like if you go to a doctor's office that is within a Safeway area, you still have very limited parking.
Yes, so this is the hospital. You are correct, we do have a cancer research facility instead. But as you can see here, these are all medical office buildings which follow the 1 to 200 square foot. So we can see here that the use is still viable with the reduced parking.
Without three convenience stores around there, drive-throughs with also a grocery store or whatever else it could be.
So the drive-throughs are actually, would go into a different part of it. They are restricted to the red section here. The medical office building would go into this multifamily slash commercial office hybrid. So they wouldn't be in the same parking lot.
Okay.
The example that you've provided reflects that it's in Gilbert. How many other agencies have you found that have the altered parking count?
Um, so we actually have the city of Surprise, which also does the one space per 200 square feet. City of Peoria follows one space per 200 square feet. City of Buckeye is actually one space per 350 square feet. Avondale is 200 square feet. Gilbert is 200 square feet and Glendale is 350 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant please make a, at least answer Chairman Opas, Commissioner Opasino's question he had about the...
Good evening Chairman Commissioners. My name is Mark Ready. I'm with RBI. I'm the applicant. I'll go through my presentation really quick. I think it will answer many of the questions that you have and then I'll follow back up with any of the final questions. So again, I won't go into the details of this, but this was our 66 acre master plan. It was originally approved in 2023. After it was approved, we started marketing the property to developers to come in and buy the individual parcels. And as we were marketing the commercial parcel, what the commercial developers were telling us is that they were having a difficult time finding enough sit-down restaurants without drive-throughs. And one of the things that we heard from both the city and from the hospital is they really want food establishments, particularly that are walking distance to the hospital. There's really nothing other than the cafeterias in the City of Hope Hospital to provide food options for patients, for family members, for employees of the hospital. And so that was one of the high priorities that we've heard from both the city and the City of Hope and what the commercial developers think that they can develop. And so the restriction on drive-throughs has become a challenge in order to attract food businesses to this property. It's a long, it's, it's a quarter mile long and it's relatively narrow. And I'll show you a concept site plan that kind of shows how it all fits into the overall project. You may recall in 2024, we did file an application as, as Justin mentioned. The planning commission recommended approval unanimously. That included two standalone drive-throughs and unlimited end caps. When we got to council, as Justin mentioned, the council was concerned about having unlimited end caps. They didn't really understand what that meant. And so we decided to go ahead and withdraw and kind of retreat, talk to our commercial developers and get more detail and more specificity on what they're actually looking for. And so that's why we withdrew at the time and that's why we're back now. We've made a modification to our request to eliminate the unlimited end caps to say we'll agree to what we would like to see is two standalones and one end cap maximum, so three total. The second item, which is the parking, came up later and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute and I've got some examples to show you. But one of the things I did want to also point out is one of the really important elements of this plan was the circulation and the connectivity and that was something that was important to the city. It was important to the hospital and it was important to us to make sure that not only this mixed-use project, but also the hospital has very, very good pedestrian connectivity to the future office developments as well as to the commercial for the food establishments that they are hoping to see here. And so this pedestrian connectivity element is unchanged from what we had originally proposed with this request. So we're not modifying anything. I think there's a perception that drive-throughs inherently create a lack of pedestrian connectivity and that's just simply not true. And so we put together a site plan to kind of demonstrate that because I think that's one of the perceptions out there is that drive-throughs are more auto-centric and they discourage pedestrian connectivity and, and, and we just don't think that's the case. So on the commercial, right now, the property is in escrow with a commercial developer. They have put together several different site plan concepts and I just want to walk through this one with you very briefly to kind of explain how this one works. And this isn't necessarily the final plan, but it's kind of the most recent version that they've developed. It has a hotel site on the north end adjacent to the freeway. And then just below that, you can see what are called shops and restaurants. So that, that would be like a larger shopping district that has at least three tenants in them with an end cap being a drive-through. So you might have a Verizon store or other retail shops and then a restaurant with a drive-through on the end of it. And so that's what that end cap talks about. Just south of the main road, the next building would be a standalone sit-down restaurant. And then south of that is a coffee shop with a drive-through. South of that is another sit-down restaurant with a drive-through option in it. And then at the far south end is a convenience market and a gas station. And you can see the pedestrian connectivity is consistent with the original master plan, so it's still very walkable. You can still walk from the hospital, from the office developments into the commercial center and have multiple and have multiple si- uh, sit-down and restaurant establishments within this larger commercial parcel. So what we're asking for, um, is to modify the condition of one drive-through to two standalone drive-throughs and one end cap. And again, it doesn't change the connectivity, doesn't change the pedestrian orientation. Um, we're simply responding to market conditions and what the developers are telling us that the folks that want to be here want in terms of the types of uses that they're looking for. And, and one thing I'll also note is that this commercial center, it's about twelve acres. Um, and we've got a lot of different uses here. We've got a hotel, we've got shops, we've got restaurants, we've got coffee shops, we've got a convenience market. So it's a really nice mix of different types of commercial uses to serve this area. The second one, and I'm really, we're really excited about this. Um, Ryan Companies is in escrow on all of the commercial office properties. If you remember that map at the beginning, I'll go back to that. We had the fifteen and a half acre commercial office and then we had the hybrid parcel. They're actually in escrow to buy the whole thing. And the goal is to develop office, medical office development and, and ancillary support uses for that entire area. Um, their escrow is a long escrow. It's in phases. They're working on phase one right now, which is the southern building. They're coordinating directly with the City of Hope as an extension of the hospital. One of the questions was why are we doing the medical office here versus on the street? And the reason is we're trying to create a campus, a medical campus between the City of Hope Hospital and the additional medical office building so that it's a campus environment. It's all connected together. The reason you see the first building in the south for, as far south as it is, is because they want it to be as close to the hospital as possible. I talked about pedestrian connectivity. You can see the, this connectivity within this hospital site, uh, the medical campus site. Um, and so again, we're maintaining that connectivity. You can see the beautiful architecture of the building. They've tried to incorporate, um, similar architectural styles to the City of Hope building, but kind of modernize it so it looks like it fits in, but it's a really nice, attractive building. Um, they're planning to develop this in three phases with the first phase being an extension of the City of Hope Hospital. That's that southern building. And then moving on to phase two and then phase three if everything is successful. And the reason that we're asking for a parking reduction is Ryan Companies, by the way, they also built this building, so they've got a lot of experience with really good quality, uh, development and construction. Um, they have done a lot of research. They've built a lot of medical office buildings. And what they found is that the parking requirements have changed pretty dramatically over the last several years. Um, and so what we're asking for is a reduction from one space per a hundred and fifty square feet to one space per two hundred square feet. And we've done a ton of research on this. One of the things that this does is it reduces unneeded asphalt and heat island and also allows us to increase the square footage of the buildings based on what the actual appropriate parking is for these uses. The last thing we want to do is underpark our facilities because then we can't use them properly. And so we don't want to underpark them. So we're very confident that the one per two hundred square feet is a hundred percent ac- accurate and, and, uh, appropriate for these uses. There's also several studies and reports that confirm our findings. The, the most prominent is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which a lot of cities use as a guide. Their, their criteria for medical dental office buildings at the peak hour, which is the highest use, um, they project one space per two hundred and twenty-two square feet, which is less than what we're asking for. The Urban Land Institute, which is another organization that's involved in development, they recommend one space per two hundred and fifty square feet. Again, more than what we're, uh, less than what we're asking for. And somebody asked about peer cities, so I have a little table here that kind of explains what Justin talked about. You can see all of the peer cities, uh, their standards are much less in terms of spaces per square foot than what the City of Goodyear is right now. And so we feel like we're in line with what most jurisdictions are doing. And we're absolutely confident that it's going to provide plenty of parking without over-parking it, which is the last thing that we want to do because it just wastes land and reduces the square footage. So in conclusion, what we're asking for is to revise the maximum number of drive-throughs from one to two standalone and one end cap and to revise the parking requirement from one per one fifty to one per two hundred. So that would be recommendation number two in the staff report. I don't know if I answered all of your questions. Hopefully I did, but if not, I'm, I'm certainly available to answer any further questions that you might have.
Okay, it's open. Any questions?
Can you go back to, you hit the medical campus, but the big one where it had? That, that one?
This one.
Yeah, so if you said that, so that was C, right, where the medical campus was going to be?
It's C and D. The site plan shows both.
Okay, so but that.
But phase one would be in C, correct?
And you said that there is someone that is looking to develop that. But if they don't develop it, then it can go back to being a mixed-use and not just all medical.
So the original zoning that was approved, um, the commercial office parcel C is locked in at commercial office. We can't change that unless we come in and we ask for an amendment. The hybrid parcel had a two-year restriction on residential, starting when we got it approved in two thousand, two thousand twenty-three. That restriction has since lapsed, so there is no restriction on that parcel now. But our intent has always been to develop it as office. The concern that we've always had is whether there's enough demand to support that much acres in this particular area. And so we wanted the flexibility to say our first choice is office. We have this entire property locked up in escrow with a developer that wants to build all of this as office. They're not, they want to make sure that it's going to work and that they can make it all, they, they have enough demand to do it. And so their, the escrow is over a long period of time in phases. If they get past the first building and past the second building and everything is going the way they hope, then they would develop the third building and it would all be office. But if for whatever reason, the demand simply isn't there to build the second or the third building, we still want the option to be able to divert it back to the hybrid parcel to the, to the multifamily. So, so our goal has always been that we would like to develop all of this as office, but we just can't force a market that isn't there. And so we're, we're confident, but we're not a hundred percent.
Right, and I understand that, but if we change the zon- the parking, then it will be until it is built out, unless you can do something with, it only goes if it's a true medical campus for the parking.
So the parking adjustment is only for medical office. So if we don't develop the hybrid parcel as office, if we develop it as multifamily, then the city's multifamily parking requirements would apply. If we develop it as some other office that's not medical office, the city's zoning ordinance for office would apply.
And I, I understand. I'm just saying if it is a mixed-use, if you go to any mixed-use place that has medical in now, parking is always a challenge. And I know this because I own eight buildings of medical that are within other things. And we can't, there's, we are limited in where we can build because the parking isn't enough. Not in a medical campus, but if you're trying to get into where other commercial availability is because you have, there, yes, people come in and out, but you also have twenty employees. So for a four thousand square foot facility, if you take it down, you're gonna, like it's twenty-seven is where you would have. You, if you have twenty employees, you need twenty employee parking spots. And then you only have seven for patients. So when you have a mixed-use, then you also have people that are coming to Walgreens or something else that take up, that, it's just the parking is a disaster if you go to some, not a medical complex. So I'm just worried about that part.
But we can't do retail in the commercial office zone, so we can't have a Walgreens or retail shops. The retail shops are in parcel E on the corner and we're conforming to the city's commercial parking requirements for parcel E. Parcel C is specifically designated as commercial office, so the zoning code limits the types of uses that we can have there. We can't have retail uses that have a much higher demand for parking than an office development would.
Okay.
Is that parking a make or bust deal for you?
Well, yes and no. It, it basically what it does is it changes the entire financial structure of the project because it's based on a certain square footage for the buildings. And if we're required to provide more parking, we have to shrink the buildings down, which changes the entire financial structure of the project. So they're basing it on a square footage and a parking requirement that works for the use. And if we have to over-park it, that means we have to provide more asphalt, more parking, which means less space for the building square footages. And so it is a problem if we don't get it because it, it basically requires them to go back and figure out if they can even make the project work. Because it's a, it's a pretty significant amount of additional parking that we are one hundred percent confident is not needed. And if you look at the comparison of the different cities, Goodyear is the only city that we were able to find that has a parking requirement as aggressive as one per one fifty for medical office. It's not in any of the professional documents. It's not in any of the peer cities. Um, and so we're, we're, and, and staff supports it. Staff has done their research and they also support this change and agree that it's adequate for the use that we're proposing.
How many spaces do you envision to have, uh, with this parking on this particular, uh, area?
That's a good question. Um, I haven't counted it because the concepts are still being worked out. So it all, it's, it's all dependent on the square footage of the building. So if you have a hundred thousand square foot building at one space per two hundred, if my math is right, that's two hundred spaces? I, I may be getting that math wrong off the top of my head here, but, but, so it's all based on the square footage, the usable square footage of the buildings as to how much parking we're going to have. And so the developer is working with the City of Hope right now to calibrate the buildings based on their needs. These are generally going to be three-story buildings. Um, I don't remember the exact square footage that they're working through. And again, they're still working through the details of that. Um, so, but, but the parking would be based on one per two hundred. That would be our minimum that we could provide based on the square footage.
You may not know this, but I'm assuming City of Hope's parking is based on the hundred and fifty.
I don't know. I would assume so, but I'm not sure.
You, it's very hard to find parking there.
Yeah, I'm not sure what their parking standard is.
Okay, I don't, I don't know if we can find that. I'm sure council will ask that question too if this goes to them because City of Hope i- is very challenging. I would have to drop my dad off and drive around for sometimes ten minutes to find parking. And so if we're decreasing parking, that kind of defeats.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it because it, I looked at the aerials and it doesn't look like, I mean, if you look at this, there's a lot of parking on this map. It doesn't look like that when you look at the aerial of the City of Hope. I, I don't know what that parking ratio is. It's a great question. Um, I'll definitely look that up.
I mean, the same at Abrazo, the same at, like, our parking is, we have, it's very challenging to park around at our hospitals here. So if we're decreasing parking, we're just, I just want to think about that.
I got one other question. Uh, I'm looking at the map now and in front of that hospital, there is a good-sized retention basin. What happened to that? Would that be relocated or?
Um, if it's part of the hospital site, that stays. We're not.
It's actually on your prop, on your, on that.
It might, it might be a temporary basin, um, that's capturing the water until this project develops. So this property would have to manage its onsite retention, either in, in basins, surface basins or underground storage tanks. Again, I'm not doing the design of this complex. Um, but the city will one hundred percent require that whatever site plan we, we develop, that we provide for all of the required retention for the project.
But if you look at the current map, it appears that it is on, uh, part of the sixty-six acre plan.
It, it's probably a temporary basin.
Inside the hospi- the hospital square.
My, my guess is that the site slopes south and that that basin is a temporary basin to keep the water that's generated on the site from going into the hospital site. So it's a, it, we do this all the time when we develop larger projects. We have temporary retention basins that protect the downstream users. And then once the upstream properties develop, they solve all, they take care of all of that onsite. So I, I think that's the case. I'm not an engineer, but my guess is that's what's going on, is there's a temporary basin on that property. And once this project develops, they will basically accommodate for that onsite so that there's no impacts to the offsite properties.
The way I look at it, once it develops, the entire site becomes, uh, impervious. You know, so there's no place for water to, to be retained.
In many cases, they do it underground.
What's the impact of removing that basin?
There will, there will be no impact because it will be resolved as part of this project. They will either do surface basins or they will do underground storage tanks to store the water. That's an absolute requirement of the city. We can't get this project approved without it. Oh, oh, okay. It was a pond for the farming operation that was occurring there previously. Sorry, I did not know that.
Okay, so, so it's not for runoff water then, uh, okay.
Sorry, I misspoke. I di- I didn't realize that, but that's, it sounds like that's the case.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
I've received one in support from Jeff Levy, right, for this item. Is that what you, okay, thank you. Um, and you wish to speak? Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The screens will let you know how much time you have left to speak. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and if you are a Goodyear resident.
Jeff Levy, Goodyear resident. Um, most of you know I don't get up here most of the time, but tonight I have to. Uh, some of you know, I, I was a career fireman, but my family are industrial, commercial builders. My sister's still involved with her husband. Um, I was just talking to her when I seen this coming back and even in the beginning and told them that Goodyear is becoming anti-drive-in window. And she's putting up restaurants and pads in Gilbert, Chandler, Surprise, Two and Buckeye now. And every single one of them is a drive-in window. And I've gone to council meetings when, you know, planning board meetings in Gilbert, Chandler. And you don't hear this stuff. I mean, it's not you guys, but the council on drive-in windows. Um, an acquaintance of mine works for one of the commercial developers that's working on this. I don't want to bring up the name, but if you drive by there, you'll see their sign along the road. And I say, ask him, I says, how's things going? And he's like, everybody wants a drive-in window that's going in there. You know, we've talked about, between me and somebody else, about the city's becoming anti-drive-in window and business anyway. Uh, I'm, I like most of yous on the planning board, but I, I can't say that about the Goodyear council and mayor. Maybe I shouldn't have said that, but, um, I just hope you guys do the right thing. I mean, I've talked to some of the council meeting. They says, oh, we want upscale restaurants. I think most of the upscale restaurants in Goodyear are going to be over in Red's development. Um, there are so many, I mean, I see the list from my sister, how many new, plenty of new restaurants are coming up that haven't even been built around here. And every single one of them has a drive-in window. So I'm in favor of seeing the whole place, everybody have a drive-in window over there. And I'm in favor of the, uh, office buildings. But, you know, I just have to say when I leave sometime, I watch the council with the mayor, with the, uh, planning board and planners. I would have to go home and take an anxiety pill because it's crazy what goes on in Goodyear. You don't see that in Chandler, Gilbert, Surprise, you know, they all want the business. So I just hope the right thing happens.
Okay, thank you.
And Marie, uh, I feel really bad. Wish you good luck. You've been great. Take care. Thank you. Okay, would anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Okay, number one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Would the secretary please read the stack recommendation?
Recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately sixty-six point six acres, generally located at West Celebrate Life Way and North Litchfield Road from Goodyear Celebration Plaza planned area development to Celebration Plaza First amended planned area development, October twenty twenty-five, as set forth in the draft of ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash X X X X. In this case, it's a little bit different since you have a few options. So what is on the screen now for the, for the motion and second is option one, uh, the staff recommendation. If you wish to voice an alternate motion or option, you can do that. But I have, um, is there a motion for the staff recommendation or an alternative motion? I have a motion from Vice Mayor Sambito and a second from Commissioner Wang. The floor is open for commission discussion.
I was not opposed personally to the three drive-throughs, but this, when we did it before. But apparently there's some other discussion about that. So I think we can all talk about what's going to go on with this. And, and I think for the most part, this is going to make most of the parties happy somewhat. And not everybody's going to get their piece of pie from this.
I have no issue with the, uh, drive-throughs, uh, as requested. My, my, my big issue here is not complying with the existing zoning ordinance with regard to the parking. Um, after all, why, why do we have a zoning ordinance if we're not going to follow it? Most of the time, the approval says one of the stipulations is in accordance with zoning ordinance. So if we allow that, then we need to change the zoning ordinance. Otherwise, you, you're setting a precedent on this thing. So maybe we can approve this without approving the request for parking. That's my point. Cause I'm a big stickler for sticking to the ordinance because that's what's. That's my point. I'm a big stickler for sticking to the ordinance because that's what it's done for.
I agree, and I'm not necessarily, I'm okay with this parking doesn't look like it would be a problem, but it is setting a precedent. So if they're gonna change medical parking, it may not work in other places. And how do you, if we say we can only do it for this certain zoning, then the next developer's gonna come and say, "Well, you did it for them. Why aren't you doing it for us?" And then eventually we're gonna change the entire zoning. So I worry about that. Not this particular project, and I don't have any problem with the drive-through either.
To ask you a question though.
Yes.
I know you said you have a number of buildings-
Yes.
-that you manage or own. Are they all in Goodyear?
No, I have, we only have one in Goodyear and it's in Indian Palm. So it's medical plus like Kumon, plus a real estate agent, plus, so it's medical and office.
So it's more the commercial type.
It's office, and so parking is always a challenge. And Gilbert is the same, so it's office. It's not, so Prescott's very different. But Glendale, we have troubles with parking. So every medical place, we've had issues with parking and I worry about that. I worry for the next person that's looking for a medical office, that they're gonna say that there's, you can't, there's not enough parking. There's no place for staff to park, but not this particular project. So I don't, I just don't want it to set as a precedent for every place in Goodyear that they're gonna say now they don't need that much parking in the medical one. Because if it's an office space, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna be all medical.
I guess, I guess, I respect what you're saying and I hear that, from what, from what I'm hearing you say is that the facilities you have are located within a general commercial. You're utilizing a commercial building for a medical use. And if this is a medical complex, which it sounds like that's the direction it's going, and if medical complexes across the county here are having success with the over one to two hundred, I, I, to me, it seems like a logical request.
Yeah, it seems like, because it's just all medical. But if you go to like an Indian Palms, the medical has to, you have to do the zoning of the medical parking, but then that if, but someone can come in, like if Kumon wanted to buy us, they wouldn't have to do the medical parking. They would get the office parking because office medical, medical is different.
But I guess the concern is that you're within a commercial use.
But this is a commercial use. They're just gonna use it for all medical unless they don't.
It's a medical complex. The part that's commercial would be different. And if they can't, they wouldn't be able to do that without coming back to the city and asking.
I don't think so. I think if they don't build, I might be confused, but right, it's zone for commercial. So if they don't use it for medical, they can use it for commercial. That doesn't mean they can't use it for like retail, but they can use it for other commercial-
Like office uses.
Or a dance studio. I don't know. That's, that's an office, not retail.
Well, on the other hand, I hate to drive through big parking lots where two-thirds of it's usually empty every time I go through it, so. And I hate to see that ground filled with asphalt.
This isn't this area, like, because this is a huge development area. I'm talking more of the-
Yeah, I understand.
So, but if you're, we have a zone, so why-
But I think if it's not gonna be medical, then they've gotta take the parking back to where the retail would be, which may be completely different, so. Yeah, anyway.
Yes. Okay.
Kent, you go.
Justin, can you talk on that? Can anything other than medical go in there if we change?
Uh, what's the question?
Can anything other than medical go into these buildings if we change the parking?
So the Commercial Office Zoning District within the PAD states, "All development within the portion of the property legally described and identified as CO Commercial Office Zoning District in the certain document shall comply with the requirements of the City of Goodyear Zoning Ordinance applicable to the development." So we would need to look at the Commercial Office zoning within the zoning ordinance for the city to see what uses are allowed to be, to go into those buildings.
To answer the question, yes, there are other uses other than medical office that can go in the Commercial Office District. And similarly, medical office can go into the Commercial District. That is along the strip.
And to answer a question that was previously asked, City of Hope is one space per four hundred square feet.
Well, maybe you can make a note that in the next amendment to these zoning ordinance, we can address this parking.
That is on our list to look at is medical office parking as well as other parkings in our, our list.
So Christian, if they build this all out as medical, it's approved as medical, but then something happens in the buildings there, they can reuse it as they want and don't have to add parking?
Their use, their TI conversion would be dependent on how much parking is available. So if they went to a use that required more parking, they'd be, they would, their TI would be limited to the amount of parking that's available on the site.
Thank you. I guess I, and then as far as the, the drive-through concept, I looked through there and that area already has five drive-throughs if you go from the intersection of Vampurin up to the freeway. And we've already approved one, and my understanding was that option one allows them to keep the one. Doesn't mean they can't come back again and ask, and they may come back for other things anyway. In my mind, I'm cool with option one and giving them the chance to at least start with one, get the medical offices going, and then come back and ask again if they need more. That's kinda the feeling I have. There's already five out there now in that area.
Okay, any other further comment? Call for the question.
Thank you. Please enter your vote. It is option one, correct. That was what the motion and the second was for. Sorry. Option one was just the medical office.
Oh, you want me to repeat it? Gotcha. Yes.
Thank you.
I can also tell you what uses are allowed in the CO zoning district if you would like me to. I have it up on my phone. Okay. Option one is, approve the proposed ordinance as is, which will contain stipulation twenty-one. The results of this will reduce medical office parking and will keep the drive-through restriction the same as one standalone.
And so we can vote on this or you can amend your motion?
You have it on the board before the two options. Do you still have that?
Sure.
Just a second.
It's up. If they want to change the monitor.
So option one is as is and, but reduce medical office parking. And option two is without stipulation twenty-one, reduce medical office parking again, permits up to three drive-throughs. And option three is deny application, retain existing zoning with no changes. Is there any other option we could think of?
Absolutely. If we want to discuss a fourth option that you wanna forward that recommendation for, we can do that as well.
However, we do need to dispose of the motion at hand. So like I said, we can either vote or you can withdraw, or Vice Chair Sambito can withdraw or amend her motion.
Well, to me, in, in my view, if I, if I'm vote, I mean, for my vote, I will approve the existing, the, the, the existing proposal and allow the addition of the drive-throughs, but not reduce the parking.
So it would be an option four then?
Option four.
In which case, I would ask that either we dispose of this motion, it's amended, but it is Vice Chair Sambito who made the motion, so it is up to you if you would like to change it. Otherwise, we need to finish the vote.
Oh, let's change it, yeah.
I would prefer to finish the vote.
I call for the vote.
This is an option one, right?
Yes, on option one. Thank you. Motion passes. A recommendation of approval will be forwarded to City Council for the January twenty-sixth meeting.
Good luck on that.
Okay, the next two agenda items, number four and number five, will be presented together. Item four and five are the Rio nineteen hundred minor general plan amendment and rezone. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Principal Planner Anne Domlich will present. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Klima and Commissioners. This is the Rio nineteen hundred project, and as you said, it is a rezone request as well as a minor general plan amendment. The current zoning of the site is King Ranch Planned Area Development, or PAD, and the zoning was established in two thousand and five and then amended in two thousand and six. And the land use map on this slide is from the two thousand and six amendment. The zoning allowed for a mix of uses, including single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial uses, civic uses, open space, and a community center. And we'll learn a little bit more about each of these on the next few slides. So as shown in this table, the King Ranch PAD included approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty-five acres of residential uses. densities would have ranged from fewer than four dwellings per acre for custom and estate homes to ten units per acre or more for multifamily developments. And on an acreage basis, the estate single-family and conventional single-family were expected to make up the bulk of the residential development. They would have taken up about eight hundred and seventy-three acres combined. Also, up to four thousand two hundred and fifty units in total were expected, and that includes all housing types, single-family and multifamily. Per the King Ranch PAD, commercial areas were planned to cluster on Cotton Lane and Estrella Parkway at major intersections. Approximately forty-six acres of commercial zoning was expected, and those areas are shown in red on this land use map. The King Ranch PAD also included approximately six hundred and thirty acres of open space. This would have included a new community park, the El Rio Trail, a trailhead park, and a system of smaller parks, trails, a community center, and a habitat mitigation area. Under the current rezone proposal, a new planned area development would be established known as Rio nineteen hundred. The new PAD would implement a layered land use approach, and we'll learn a little bit more about that on the next slide. And the PAD will also set up some modified development standards and use permissions, and we'll also learn a little bit more about those. So the Rio nineteen hundred PAD will implement a system of seven land use character areas, also known as LUCA's. Each LUCA allows for specific zoning districts and uses within its boundaries. And the groups are layered over each other and are intended to show where certain uses may be located, not necessarily where they will be located. Full details are provided in the staff report, but I'll give you a quick summary here. The open space LUCA is the green one. That's for steep hillsides, natural areas, drainage areas, parks, trails, et cetera. It's compatible with all zoning districts. The civic use LUCA is the blue one. It's compatible with schools, community centers, fire stations, and similar. And it is also compatible with the Public Facilities District, or PFD. Estate residential is the light yellow LUCA. That's for large lot, single-family homes, and it's compatible with the AU and the R one-ten zoning districts. The Village Neighborhood LUCA is the medium yellow one. That's intended for low to medium density residential, and that includes detached and attached single-family homes, court homes, and two-family homes. And it's compatible with R one-seven, R one-six, R one-four, R one-C, R one-A, and the R two zoning districts. The Urban Neighborhood LUCA is that dark yellowish-brown one, and it's for multifamily residential MF twelve through MF twenty-four. The Red LUCA is the Commercial Activity Center, and that's for commercial office and medical uses. It's compatible with the CO, C one, and C two zoning districts. And then finally, we have the Resort LUCA, which is the magenta one, and that's compatible with a resort hotel. It has C two zoning, but with a customized and limited selection of uses. So under this layered system, you can see that the open space, the civic use, and the Village Neighborhood LUCA's, they cover the most area and therefore provide the most flexibility for development. The Commercial and Urban Neighborhood LUCA's are oriented toward Cotton Lane and Estrella Parkway and along cross streets adjacent to those two arterials. Large lot, custom, and estate homes are oriented toward the hilliest area between Cotton Lane and Estrella Parkway, as well as at the southern end of the PAD area. And finally, the Resort LUCA is located at the east end of the property. So the applicant has provided a conceptual land use plan showing a likely scenario for the development of the PAD. Again, this is conceptual because the LUCA approach allows for development flexibility. But I wanted to give you a few takeaways. The PAD requires a minimum of, sorry, a minimum of twenty-five acres of commercial zoning. That's within the Commercial Activity Center LUCA. However, the conceptual land use plan shows approximately ninety-two acres. So it's likely the development will end up with a lot more commercial than the minimum. On an acreage basis, most residential will likely take the form of R one-seven, R one-six, and/or R one-four zoning. That's approximately five hundred and sixty-five acres. High-density residential, which is MF twelve through MF twenty-four, is anticipated to occupy about a hundred and ten acres. And a resort is not shown on this conceptual land use plan because its development will be contingent on whether the market demand exists for such a use. Okay, the rezone is proposing several revised development standards, and I'll just summarize them here. For single-family residential, we have modified lot sizes, widths, depths, and setbacks for some districts, as well as modified lot coverage for all districts. A minimum of seventeen percent of the single-family residential must be an open space, and half of that must be usable open space. And at least a hundred acres of the estate residential LUCA will be developed with R one-ten or AU zoning. Should a resort be built in the area where the estate residential LUCA and resort LUCA overlap, that a hundred acres could be reduced by the area of the resort within that overlap. Modifications for multifamily include flexibility in building heights for MF twelve when pitched roofs are used, modified rear setbacks for MF twelve, as well as modified setbacks from single-family residential zoning for MF twelve, and increased lot width for MF twenty-four. As I mentioned before, at least twenty-five acres when the Commercial Activity Center LUCA will need to use either CO, C one, or C two zoning, or a combination of those. The Resort LUCA will utilize C two zoning with customized uses, and a new fire station will be provided, as well as two new elementary school sites. Several hillside development standards are proposed for areas exceeding twenty percent in slope. I won't go through all of the standards, but I will say that at least fifty percent of the total designated hillside areas will be preserved as open space. Up to thirty percent of that preserved open space may be disturbed and revegetated as long as it matches the natural state. So as with the King Ranch PAD, uh, Rio nineteen hundred does propose extensive open space, and we have a conceptual open space plan here on this slide. The El Rio Trail and Linear Park will run along the south side of the Gila River, and a neighborhood park with trailhead will be constructed next to this trail. Uh, both the trailhead and the trail itself will be open to the public. You don't need to live in Rio nineteen hundred to use them. Um, in addition, there will be a community park approximately thirty acres in size, and it will be constructed within the PAD and also open to the public. We will also have additional trails, trailheads, local and neighborhood parks, and amenity areas throughout the PAD area. Um, Rio nineteen hundred's trails will connect with existing Estrella Trails at the PAD boundary, and in total, at least thirty percent of the PAD area will be open space. So in addition to a rezone request, the applicant is also seeking approval of a minor general plan amendment for thirty-one acres within the Rio nineteen hundred project area. Uh, this amendment would change the designation of the thirty-one acres from open space to neighborhoods. And on this slide, you can see the location of the amendment area in relation to the broader Rio nineteen hundred property. And here's another slide that's showing the before and after of the minor general plan amendment. And you can see on these maps that most of Rio nineteen hundred is already in the neighborhood's designation, um, which is the yellow color on the map. Uh, the proposed amendment will bring these thirty-one acres into alignment with the rest of the project site for Rio nineteen hundred, and the thirty-one acres are outside of the Gila River floodway. So a neighborhood meeting was held on July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Um, it was for both the rezone and the general plan amendment request. Um, additionally, staff have also received several emails and calls about this project. Comments from the public, uh, concerned housing density, types of housing and commercial expected, transportation issues such as timing for the widening of Cotton Lane, um, protections for hillsides and habitats. Some neighbors in Estrella are also very interested in the resort idea, and how that will impact their community. Liberty Elementary School District and Buckeye Union High School District were both notified, but had no comments. Um, these districts did sign an agreement of understanding with the King Ranch Project in two thousand and four for donation of elementary school sites and payment of fees for residential units. And the applicants do intend to uphold this agreement or any new agreements that they may make with the districts. All postcards, site signage, legal ads, and website postings were completed as per state and city law. So staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the Minor General Plan Amendment of thirty-one acres from open space to neighborhoods. We also recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezone from King Ranch PAD to Rio nineteen hundred PAD, subject to the proposed stipulations. And I do want to point out that stipulation number four for the rezone does have an error in it. Um, there's two numbers cited. There's nineteen hundred and then fourteen hundred. Both of those numbers should be nineteen hundred. It's nineteen hundred acre feet per year of water allocation. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. The applicant team is also here, and they also have a presentation for you tonight.
Questions for staff?
Yes. Can you reiterate the number of total units expected?
Um, so the applicant has selected not to put a cap on the number of units for the project, and instead go by acre feet per year for water allocation. Uh, the proposed water allocation is nineteen hundred. Um, to be honest, at this time, we don't know how many units that translates to. Um, I don't know if Marty would like to speak.
Thank, Chairman, may I add?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I do want to clarify that staff did that. Staff has switched from capping dwelling units to acre feet. And in the staff presentation, I'm sure, they're gonna go, I'm sure they can answer that question and go over the planned number of units.
Okay.
So.
And then I know you mentioned something about transportation. Um, do we have a construction timeline for the widening of Estrella Bridge over the Gila River?
Um, that's an excellent question, and I think I'll defer that to Marty as well.
In addition to that, I'd also like to know when the widening of Cotton Lane and Estrella Parkway will occur, if we're gonna add another, I don't know, five thousand units, since I just have to pick a number, plus another ninety-two acres potentially of commercial. People need to be able to get in and out. So just last night, they had one of those roads completely closed down, and it impacted severely people coming and going all afternoon and well into the evening. And once we got down the hill, there were other accidents. So if there was something drastic across that river, fire through the wetlands, we'd have two major roads gone. So we need to really commit to when we're going to have the bridge and the roads done there.
Good evening. Uh, uh, thank you for the question, Vice Chair Sambito and Commissioner. I'm Marty Crossland. I'm the Deputy Director of Development Services. I'm over the engineering side of development. Um, the traffic, um, currently there are two projects in design with our capital improvements program. One pertains to the widening of Cotton Lane south of the bridge to the roundabout. Um, and that is, I don't know the actual fiscal year in which that's supposed to be constructed, um, but it is currently under design. Estrella Bridge is currently under design for the second bridge, um, with some of the extension of the widening to the north of the river. I don't know if it has a lot of extension of widening to the south. Um, but if any of the development triggers the fifth and sixth lanes, that would be an option to help alleviate to the south of the bridges.
Okay, well, the portion, the there's still the portion to the north there, and maybe that's someone else's development requirement, because it's off-site. But the impact to the units that we put up there, and the people accessing the commercial, will be impacted if something happens along there, be it fire or water damage or whatever. So they have to be able to get in and out, and fast.
Yeah, there's currently, uh, something in the works for, if the city moves forward with the the capital project first, there will, we're pursuing a cost recovery. Um, if it, if they move forward first, they would have to at least widen to meet the city standards, unless their traffic study.
Who is the they? This particular project?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Perfect.
So you say the widening is under design, and the bridge is under design. Like, what's the timeline typical with that? I mean, under design could be years. And as a resident up there, um, knowing that one of those roads is closed because of a police situation like it was yesterday, it's, it's can be pretty stressful when you have to get somewhere.
Um, yeah, I don't have the timelines. I know they're, they're both under design, and I think the Estrella Bridge is ahead of Cotton Lane. Um, I don't know if they're programmed for a bu, a build in fiscal year twenty-seven, um, or if they're yet to be, uh, commissioned this, this fiscal year. Uh, I believe they were under designed well into last fiscal year, so they may still have starting construction at this time, uh, soon. The bridge will take a couple, uh, if not a year, maybe two years to run. It's gonna be a large project.
Once it starts.
Yeah.
So you changed the benchmark from, uh, num, from units to, uh, acre feet. So how many acre feet of water is available to support this development at the moment? And where do they come, and what's the source?
So currently, the, the allotment per the Integrated Water and Wastewater Master Plan is nineteen hundred and, and some change, I believe. Um, and that is per the updated allocation per dwelling unit. That was a change from the twenty sixteen to the twenty twenty-four. Uh, twenty sixteen, the single-family residential was a blanket four hundred and two gallons per dwelling, dwelling unit. Um, in the twenty twenty-four, that was split into areas of the city, because some of the older areas still have turf yards, they're older developments, they generally use more water than the south part of the city. So the south, basically from the Gila River to Pecos Road alignment, uh, is a reduction of, from four hundred and two to three hundred and seventeen. So that, in general, allows more units to come along with the same overall usage.
You're talking about gallons, three hundred and some, that's per day is?
Right.
Yeah, per day's usage per, per home.
Yeah.
How many units is one acre feet, a, uh, acre foot of water to support?
Oh, I did the math the other day, and I can't remember offhand. Um, I know when we did the math, I think this acreage came out to almost twenty-seven hundred acre feet. Um, so this is actually a, a reduction on that.
That was the old master plan under the old
Yeah.
old water counts.
Yeah.
And again, where is the source of water coming from to support this?
It's currently in our designation. This is all, this is all currently within the.
The city has enough capacity to support this?
Correct, in that, in that WPA, yes.
And, and the city vouchs for that, right?
And the city.
The city is vouching that they will support this development by providing this, uh, amount of water?
Yes, by capping the acre feet, that is the, the direction.
I mean, from what I read, it's like by the time this is done, it's like five thousand one hundred forty-nine units in this development. So how much water would that, would be needed to support that?
Yeah, I believe if they, if they are required to go over that amount, they would have to find the source themselves.
Well, I know, because most of the water in Goodyear comes from groundwater. We don't really share, uh, color, water from Colorado River. Because I know that, because I was, I was in the rate review commission a number of years ago, and we discussed that. So the, the amount of water that the city has is pretty limited.
Yeah, and this is, this is per the current allocation, per the current model for the IWMP as of April of this year.
Chair, may I also just add, I, I do want to be clear, too, that we do have stipulation number four is stating that they're limited to nineteen hundred acre feet. So, um, then what the process is, and, you know, I, water law is very complicated in Arizona, but we don't, um, aren't committed until final plat. And so what we do, it's a similar process we've used in Estrella, and what we'll do in Rio nineteen hundred is on the final plat, we add a calculation, basically tracking how many acre feet. So we determine, they give us a water report, so we know that individual final plat, how many acre feet it's gonna use. We put it in our system, track it. It's on the final plat, how many acre feet it's allowed to have, and then if we hit nineteen hundred acre feet, we will not approve any more final plats. They'll provide us the water reports at the detail. Again, it, it's, you know, as, um, we, we can follow up with the conversion of the IWMP average day demand to acre feet. It's gonna be an average, because there's, there's also more than single-family. It depends on how many park spaces in that final plat. Is there a school nearby? Is there a commercial corner? So there is a, um, there is a calculation per unit, but the final plat itself won't be such a straightforward conversion, because there's also just general HOA landscaping and parks and open spaces, which is why we're moving to the acre feet, so we have a little more control, rather than just tracking the dwelling units. We can actually look at what the usage of the water is gonna be, and not approve final plats if they go over that nineteen hundred, or we, or they obtain more water resource.
So once that nineteen hundred is being utilized, and this development is only halfway, what happens then?
Well, I don't think it's, I mean, we, I, I, it, it's gonna be more than halfway, I mean.
That's why I'm trying, I'm trying to get a sense as to whether that would be sufficient to support this entire development.
Well, I, you know, the applicant may have some more information to share with you. Again, I just don't have the calculation right on my fingertips of the average day demand.
Because I thought that, uh, on a project like this, it is, um, upon the, uh, the developer to, to prove that there is enough water supply to support it
Correct.
for a hundred years. That's the state statute, I thought, no?
Yes, well, the, the city of Goodyear is a designated provider, so we, we are required to have the one-hundred-year assured water supply, and so that's why we have the stipulation of assuring that they're limited to the water we, under our current designation, have.
Okay, not, not to change the subject, um, may I continue, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Has there been a financial impact, uh, analysis on this project? Uh, has there been a traffic study done? Uh, as a result of this?
Yes, that, that is required for rezoning, yes.
And and what is the impact on city services? Once this project is completed, as you know, there'll be uh, additional services are needed, uh, law enforcement, fire, and so forth. And in order to do that, there will be an increase in the number of, uh, heads uh, for the city. And from what I read here, this may not be enough. The revenue coming from this may not be enough to support that additional requirement for services. And so part of that will be borne by the, the rest of the city. That's why there's no financial impact analysis on this thing at, at the moment. I mean, we, we, we can, I think the city cannot keep on approving project, and then later on, once it's approved, oops, we didn't see that, that there will be additional um, services needed, or, or additional, uh, financial impact on the rest of the population.
So I, I can speak to, the next step is the preliminary plat, which will likely carve out some phasing, and that will better determine when those services will be required, uh, for fire response times, uh, the traffic, uh, any, any additional, anything beyond our standards for the fifth and sixth lanes on Cotton Lane or Estrella Parkway. Um, those would be identified as we know how much they're going to develop at a time. Uh, they're likely not gonna develop all forty-two hundred units at one time. Um, so we'll, we'll know more of that once we get into the more granular level.
What happens if the rezoning does not go through to this land?
Thank you, if I can answer that. Um, the current zoning is in place, so they can move forward with preliminary plotting and final plotting for their current zoning.
From twenty, from two thousand and five?
Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions for your staff? Okay, the developer, would you like to come up and make a presentation, please? You have ten minutes.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Commission. Good evening. My name is Brian Greathouse with the law firm Birch and Cracchiolo. Uh, our firm represents Harvard Investments. You may know of Harvard, you may not, but Harvard has, uh, been in the business for over forty years, done developments all throughout the Valley and throughout the nation. Um, they're currently the developer of Estrella Mountain Ranch, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Um, Harvard's assembled a very talented team of planners and engineers and, uh, others to help bring this PAD to life. Uh, as you heard, the original zoning for King Ranch was approved in two thousand and five, uh, quite some time ago. That's twenty years now. That was a different time and place, when people wanted different types of homes and different types of lifestyles. Things have changed over the last twenty years. Um, we anticipate to kind of line up these CIP projects with this development. We anticipate that first construction would occur in about two thousand twenty-seven, and that the first home would be delivered in around twenty twenty-nine. So, um, and, and we anticipate that a couple, like probably two hundred-ish homes would be developed and sold per year. Uh, we just looked up on the city's website, and I actually heard yesterday from the deputy city manager that the CIP projects are supposed to start in twenty twenty-six. That's Estrella, uh, Parkway and the Cotton Lane Road expansion. Um, like Marty said, Cotton Lane will initially. Um, like Marty said, Cotton Lane will initially be two lanes in each direction. And it's on the developer to add one lane when a traffic study triggers that at one of the pre plat, plat levels. So if we go in with a pre plat of, let's say, a hundred and fifty lots and it triggers that requirement. That would be on the developer to finish out those, uh, more regional type lanes of improvement for Estrella Mountain Ranch, for example. And that's published, that's published on the, on the website too, so it's more than just a conversation I had yesterday. Um, with respect to services, there's a fire station that site that will be donated. And then each builder will pay into the fees to fund the construction of that fire station. Same thing with the city park, there'll be a thirty acre city park donated with fees paid. And the city will design and build the park when, um, they're ready to, based on the budgeting and the funding. Um, if I may, in, in overall, um, impact fiscal impacts, just the infrastructure alone is approximately two hundred and fifty million dollar investment to put in. To bring this community to life, so it's a significant amount of money. Residents will be the ones paying the sales taxes and the property taxes to support the services that they need and other needs. Um, others need in the community to sustain those city services. But this, this site is a very exciting site, and I think it's exciting that Harvard's been working on this for a couple of years now. Um, you can see the future SR thirty to the north, future, uh, three oh three extensions also coming down from the north to south. So not only is access being improved to this area, but also visibility. And it's very important to make it a beautiful community. And the, the highlight of this whole thing is all the open space, the trails and the parks that are going to be here. Uh, Harvard's talented team has put together some great exhibits and things that really connect this development together. Uh, one of the highlights is a El Rio Trail that, if you don't know what the El Rio Trail is, it's supposed to extend all the way from Tempe Town, Town Lake. Out here to the West Valley. This will be the first portion in the West Valley that I'm aware of that will be developed. It's, uh, around four, four and a half miles of trail. Not only that, Harvard has an internal linear trail system that connects the neighborhoods with the school sites, with the future commercial core. A nice experiential park that they're planning with a nice entry feature, um, and, and the city park as well. And then with that linear park, it all gets connected north and south, so there's trails everywhere. And they, they intend this to be a very high-end community. And the amenity is being outside, enjoying nature with your, your community. The El Rio Trail is shown on the top right here. We know that's going to be two different trails. One's a hard surface trail, one is a so- soft surface trail along the bank protection that will be built along Gila River. Um, we're also installing at a minimum of one public trailhead. And I'll, that will be located here where it says, uh, NP, we anticipate that to go right here. There's a stipulation requiring certain things to be developed in there, like parking and, and shade and ramona structures and things. Within the community, we, I talked about the thirty acre park, this is just representative of what it could be. And what park isn't complete without pickleball these days. Um, neighborhood parks will include kind of a closer to your home area to go and enjoy. The park with certain amenities and ball fields. Uh, and then within each individual development, there'll be local parks that'll be, uh, programmed and kind of amenitized. Based on the type of home that's being developed in that specific parcel. Um, this is the, this is an example of the gateway to the community. You can see this red node here as you cross the bridge from north to south, that's the Cotton Lane Bridge. You're kinda celebrated by this great, um, entry that's circular purposely. And it kinda connects all the trails in the community in a central hub. And then right next to this, to the north, is an anticipated commercial area. And then next to that commercial area, we anticipate the city park will be located. Uh, we've proposed a variety of housing types, including traditional single-family homes, estate level, um, homes. It's very important to the city council to try to attract executive housing. Um, and then we have urban residential development opportunities, mostly near this commercial core that I'm showing you here. This commercial core is, is really nice, as you come up through the mountain. Um, the first little saddle there is a great spot to put a commercial center. Um, this is a representative of what could be developed here. Here we have commercial on both sides of Cotton Lane. And it's also adjacent to the city park and where we anticipate the fire station site to be. But there could be a grocer, um, some office is shown here, fitness center would be nice. And then I know, uh, Amy from Harvard's talked about a, an ice cream type shop to jump on the trail and, and hang out at these different spaces. Anne already presented our proposed land use plan. These are representations of what a school site and a, a fire station site may look like. We did meet with the, um, operations director of Liberty and they were, uh, very pleased that we were donating the school sites. We've committed to two, um, at a minimum of fifteen acres each on each side of Cotton Lane to them. With respect to the maximum number of units and the old King Ranch PAD and our new, um, or I'd say the city's new policy of a stipulation. Limiting the number of units based on acre feet per year. The original King Ranch, and I have some slides if you need to see them, but I know I only have two minutes left. The original King Ranch conceptual land use plan showed six thousand one hundred and fifty-five units. What I understand and have been told is that there was a, uh, discussions had and it was capped at four thousand two hundred and fifty units. Based on a, um, a commitment of allocation of water resource. So that stipulation was a maximum number of units. We started down this path and we were proposing a certain maximum number of units in our development. But because of the city's new water policy that the, um, this is all what I understand, uh, what the city council adopted by resolution. Is that the cap on the number of units is based on the, um, amount of water that, water resource. That the city's willing to, uh, provide to a developer. So here they've, they've, we have a stipulation that says we're allocated nineteen hundred acre feet per year. That will be the, um, the cap on number of units, not a specific stipulation like we used to do. Like in the old King Ranch PAD and most of the other cases you've seen before this commission. Um, we understand, I, I initially understood that the number, the nineteen hundred was supposed to be, um, similar to or the same as the original entitlement on the property today. That's four thousand two hundred and fifty. And I know that number's been moving around a little bit. And, um, we are somewhat of the guinea pigs on the calculation of water. But based on that stipulation, there won't be more homes built than there's water available. The water has to be available before the homes are built. So this is, it shouldn't be a water discussion. And the city has professional engineers that, um, study these things and identify what should be approved based on the water that's available to serve those homes. But at, at the end of the day, we think this is a beautiful community, really celebrates the mountains, the river, the trails. Uh, Harvard's a high-quality developer and they intend this to be a very high-quality development. Um, and we request your approval here today in accordance, or your recommendation of approval here today. In accordance with staff's recommendation, we certainly appreciate their recommendation. And we're okay with all stipulations one through twenty as, uh, revised, as Anne mentioned on stipulation number four.
The acre feet has been bandied around that term, maybe a lot of people don't understand, but I believe an acre feet is like three hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons. Is that right? Somebody know? I think I'm right.
What does one acre foot amount to with respect to gallons?
Somebody Google it.
Thank you, I just Googled it, it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Oh, I missed it by one.
And, and one thing to keep in mind is when we're talking about acre feet, it's an annual, annual usage.
Amy from Harvard's.
So it's gonna be forty-two hundred homes versus the original plat of sixty-one hundred, so almost two thousand less than what had been originally plotted back when.
Can you repeat that, please?
Uh, we heard that the original plat was for sixty-two hundred homes.
The, the original King Ranch conceptual land use plan included. Um, you'll see on the bottom right here, six, up to six thousand one hundred and fifty-five units.
Sixty-two hundred homes, so. But now with the acre feet, uh, uh, capping it, it's gonna be only forty, forty-one plus.
Well, they, they, on that case, they also had a stipulation that even though their conceptual land use plan showed up to six thousand one hundred and fifty-five units. They had a stipulation that, that required a maximum of four thousand two hundred and fifty feet. Units.
Units, yeah, okay. So it's not gonna be as many, as dense as, as the original plan. If people were asking that question, uh, talking about. If we wanna look at that, there, there's actually fewer homes than the original, uh, plan was gonna put in.
Our conceptual land use plan is less proposed dwelling units than the King Ranch proposed land use plan, that's correct.
Any other questions for the applicant? No, you sure? Your last shot.
Well, I'm really excited about the trail. When I was first appointed, I had friends that are very athletic coming up to me and saying, oh, you guys have to do trails, you guys have to. So I'm really excited to see the trail. The idea that you've spoken with, I don't know, Public Works Director, whoever it was, that said that. The roads and the bridge will be going in twenty-six. And then you guys don't even expect a unit to turn out to an owner until twenty-nine. Things take a long time, having done it myself, I, I know that, that's, and that sounds like a good goal for me. I mean, I still feel more comfortable if there was something saying in the paperwork. But, I mean, at least we know it's gonna be under construction, so that was my biggest concern.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any speaker cards?
I've received one so far from James Modesty.
Would you like to come forward? Is it here?
I'm not sure. I have a James, is it modest, Modesty? Says, uh, you wish to speak if necessary, I'm, I apologize, do you want to speak? No? Okay, guess not, but it was in support of the application.
Okay.
That's the only one I received.
Like to speak on this agenda, okay, please come forward then. And, uh, when you're finished, give, uh, fill out a speaker card.
I, I just wanted to ask about the, the BAU or BLM land that's behind, we live, we butt up against the BLM land. And my fear is that this community is gonna come in and wipe out, cause it, when you look at the map, it looks like it's right on the other side of where I live. And to me, I find that disturbing, but, you know, I understand progress and stuff like that. But when are we gonna be able to see a real picture of what it's gonna look like? So what I can expect is the landowner, the homeowner, or when I, when I look out my fence, what I'm gonna see. Like right outside my fence, cause it looks like it's right there.
I'm certainly not the expert, I can't imagine that they would do away with BLM land, but it is the applicant's turn.
That's, that's my question.
We never say never, but, um, BLM land's not for sale. BLM's land has a purpose for the Bureau of Land Managed, and they manage their land for its flood purposes, for its recreational purposes, all of those things. With respect to what, what, uh. Somebody may look at if they back up to that BLM land, it's not too much different than what the old King Ranch, um, PAD was. And here, if we go into our, our, um, community here, we, we have quite a bit of separation there. Be- because that BLM buffer. And what we didn't get into earlier, because the question wasn't asked, but it, where we do butt up to Estrella Mountain. We have, we've already self-imposed a hundred-foot building setback to make sure that that buffer's there between the existing owners and, and future owners.
Thank you. There was somebody else that had their hand up over here first?
Yes, so please come up to the, please come up to the podium so that we, they can hear you. And please, um, you're limited to three minutes, please, before you begin to speak, identify yourself by stating your name and if you're a Goodyear resident, thank you.
Uh, Darby Curran, I live in Estrella. Uh, would you repeat that? You just said there'd be a hundred-foot buffer between what?
Was, was that your only question?
Well, and is it, uh, the north part of Estrella? A hundred foot from that, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, we've got some slides, I'm Mark Ready with RBI, sorry, I'm the land planner here. We have some backup slides that I'd like to show you that talk about the buffers, so.
Oh, right there.
There's, there's, there's several different buffer requirements within this project. So on the east side of Cotton Lane, you can see on this map, there is a hundred-foot building setback buffer adjacent to the existing homes. If you look at the blow up, you can see all the homes that are to the south. We have a hundred-foot building setback within that hundred-foot buffer, so there will not be any buildings within a hundred feet of our property line. Most of those homes are also set back, so it'll be more than a hundred feet, because there's a land on the, on the south side, plus an additional hundred feet on our side.
So the buffer won't. The buffer won't be part of people's backyards, you said building setback, so it'll be a buffer plus the building setback from the house to the property line. So a hundred, a hundred-foot buffer and then a setback from their property line to their house.
The restriction is a building, no buildings within one hundred feet. So it could, it could hypothetically be somebody's backyard, but you cannot have a building or a structure within that hundred foot. It's unlikely we would have backyards that are that deep, but, but the, the restriction is a building setback. There's also on the, on the west side of Cotton Lane, probably not where you live, but just, just so everybody is aware. We also have, um, buffers on the west side, these buffers are a little different than the building setback buffers. These buffers basically say that we cannot do lot sizes that are any smaller than the lots immediately adjacent to. So that homeowners that have a seventy-foot wide lot, they're not gonna have a fifty-foot wide lot behind their backyard. The minimum lot size would be the same as theirs, seventy feet. So everywhere where we back up to an existing home within Estrella, we have a restriction. That ensures that we're not gonna have lot sizes that are smaller than what exists to the south. And then again, on this side, it is a, is a physical building setback, um, on, on this particular side against these homes here.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I'm more interested in the area next to the, uh, Estrella Parkway. So, um, and I believe this area here is part of the Estrella Mountain Ranch. Estrella, uh, Mountain Park, Regional Park. Right, is that what you're talking about, BLM was here?
No, BLM is different.
No. Where is the BLM?
The BLM, I mean, the, the BLM is, is this area right here.
Oh, that's on the other side of Cotton.
Where it jogs up, yeah, that area, that little eighty acre exception piece, I think it's eighty, might be, it might be one sixty. But that's the BLM land right there, that, that the previous lady was talking about.
Cause, cause there's some, uh, Estrella Regional Park land on the west side of Estrella Parkway.
It's on the.
And that's what's indicated here.
Oh, okay. Is that, do you know, is that Estrella? I'm not sure, I know Estrella Regional Park is on the, on the east side.
There's a little piece that comes out, I believe it's shown right here.
Okay, that may be, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, but you may be right. We're, that's not part of our project, we're not, we're not doing anything there, yeah, that's not part of our case.
And if I got one more question, is there a road gonna connect Estrella Drive somewhere where the King Ranch entrance is right now? All the way over to Cotton Lane?
No.
Hopefully.
Um, the reason is that we can't physically get a road through there, so what, what he's talking about is this exception parcel right here, there's a home on the property. That we do not own. There is a road, um, that provides a direct connection to that parcel. Um, there is a steep, you can see these dotted areas, this is a very, very steep sloped mountainous area. And there's a, a very narrow, um, passageway through here. I, I, I don't know exactly what that was for, but the canyon walls are thirty or forty feet tall and it's about twenty feet wide. We cannot get a road through there, the original plan was to try to get a road through there, but we physically can't do it. We would have to blast the entire mountain down to get that road through there. So we basically shifted our collector road to the south.
Okay.
And connected it, so that road does not go through. There may be some internal connections within these subdivisions that provide additional access points. But we cannot get a road through that mountain pass, cause it's just too, it's too steep.
Okay, but what you're saying, if I'm hearing you right, is there is gonna be a road from Estrella Parkway all the way to Cotton. And it's just being shown further south.
Yes, it's this road right here.
Okay, cause that would've helped with this last police action that we were talking about earlier. Is that Estrella Parkway was completely blocked in both the. Cause that Estrella Parkway was completely blocked in both directions. And if somebody could've gotten off of Cotton, on your new road, then you can get home. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Hello, council and, uh, people attendees. My name is Paul Frimmer, uh, resident in Estrella Parkway as well. I'm not, uh, against development. I have sat on council for twelve years in another jurisdiction. So we've had, uh, these questions come up time and time again. And, uh, we always double the ERUs equivalent residential units. And by the way, I just wanna go on record and say, I'm not a NIMBY, not in my backyard. I, I look forward to development, but we have to ask ourselves certain questions to make sure that everything is planned out and thought through clearly, so that you don't get caught with your pants down and, and, uh, all of a sudden, you're, you're, you're billed out for your, what's your, what's your water usage, what's your sewer capacities, what's your transportation impact studies, what's your water drainage studies? You have to take into consideration all of these when you're planning a development community, as I'm sure the developer has already gone through that. It's just important to make a proper decision based on the facts and not get sugar-coated by all the bells and whistles, smoke and mirrors, that sometime can get presented at hearings like this. Now, just to back up a little bit, back seventeen, eighteen years ago, when we first came to Estrella, we were told, and I mean, this happens time and time again, that these lands were protected lands and not ever going to be developed. Times change, things happen, uh, things get re-designated. I thought tonight was a hearing for rezoning. So things kinda got sidetracked in my mind. Is this land rezoned? Is it not rezoned? And, uh, if it is rezoned, is this just a rubber stamp to move things forward? So those are my only comments. Good luck to the developers if things go through. It, it looks like a well-planned community. And, uh, but just really consider all the, all the impacts that they have on your emergency services and, and your budgets. Because as soon as you add basically a city within a city, your budgets are gonna, uh, increase exponentially, as I'm sure you're well aware of. And, uh, thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you for bringing that respect. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Yes?
Thank you in advance for your time. I'm Kathleen. I work, I live in Estrella. And my, uh, couple concerns from when I went to the original, um, uh, community meeting to now that I wanted to just flush out and see what may or may not has changed. On the, um, amendment, um, there were two thirty-one acre parcels originally that you were looking at. Um, there was one down lower and one up higher. Are you only looking at one at this point?
Are you referring to the Arizona State Miami?
Yes.
Parcels?
Yes.
Those are both included in our rezoning application with the authority, state land, but not purchased by Harvard.
Okay, cause I saw the one mentioned, I didn't see the second one mentioned. The one that was closer to the river was mentioned, but I didn't see the one that was further south.
One of the thirty, I think there's four, one's forty. They're both forty. They're both forty.
Okay.
One of the forty-acre parcels is already a proper land use designation on the general plan of neighborhoods. The other one being re-designated to neighborhoods to comply with state law.
Okay, and so with that, when we were talking about the other issues with the, the impact stays, the traffic, the, um, amount of water being used, those are part of the proposed amendments, and if we're putting more homes in there instead of leaving that open space, that's something to consider. Is now we're taking away that space that was originally going to be open space. My other concern is there are at least three major washes that go through the west cotton, uh, west of Cotton area. And I, we were blessed with all the rain the, the past few weeks, and you can see where these get very full. And, um, the, the feeder washes that come into them, we actually live right beside one of the feeder washes that comes right off the mountain. And so this starts overflowing in the basin, then gets out to its feeder, which goes out to the main washes. So I know that grading and drainage is a, a bigger detail, a little further down the road, but if we're looking at putting, several homes in this area where these washes are, and a lot of these feeder washes coming in, just the impact to the environment and not having to look at anything changing, um, where somebody didn't have a flood issue before, but now they will because you put something over it, or you backfilled it, or whatever that issue may be. So those are the concerns that I wanted to bring up. I know some of those are details that are going to come up, um, as the planning goes. But if we're looking at a proposed plan, it needs to be something that's, uh, your forethought at this time. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else?
Good evening, uh, Tim Clendenning, uh, EMR resident. Couple of concerns with the roads. It sounds like that's being addressed, that hopefully the roads will be in before, um, the development lands. One concern was what the tallest building could be, cause I have a view and I can, I'm in EMR and I can see. So I was kinda concerned about what height restrictions there may be. And, uh, additionally, the, the lot to, um, square footage of the home ratio, I'm not sure what our ratio is now, but it's, it's pretty, um, well proportioned house, you know, not all house, no lot. So I'm kinda, you know, what, what would be the ratio, are we gonna continue with this current ratio we have? In EMR, as far as lot to, um, home size ratio? Does anybody know what, uh, what that is? Or will it be changed, will it be shrunken?
The applicant, did, did you hear the question?
Sorry, we were having a little discussion. Could you repeat the question?
He was talking about the, uh, current heights restriction, or there, uh, what's the tallest building that's gonna go in there? And also the lot, uh, ratio between the house and the lots, is that gonna be, uh, pretty much proportional like it is now? Or are they gonna be shrunken, will a lot shrunken?
Sure. So there are development standards in the PAD document. That's a tough question to answer, because the development standards are based on the zoning designations, and there's about ten different zoning designations. Each one has its own standards. On the single-family side, the building heights, um, are thirty feet. One of the districts is thirty-five feet maximum height, it's the, the attached product. When you get to the multifamily, there are different height restrictions that range from thirty feet to forty feet. But most of the multifamily par- parcels are much further to the north, further away from the Estrella property. So as you're closer to Estrella, it's mostly single-family, and the tallest building within that would be thirty-five feet. But, but one, two, three, four, there's six different districts within the village neighborhood. And five of, uh, four of them have a maximum height of thirty feet, which would be a basic two-story, single-family home. And then two of them have a maximum height of thirty-five feet. So that would be the tallest buildings anywhere near the southern portions of the site.
And lot sizes?
Uh, the lot sizes, again, they vary greatly from acre lots all the way down to our smallest lot size is a, a smallest single-family lot size is a forty, a four thousand square foot minimum lot size. We have a, a five, fifty-five hundred, a seven thousand, um, we have a ten thousand, and then we have, I think, a twenty thousand square foot lot. So there's a large variation in the lot sizes. I would say they're very consistent with Estrella in terms of the variety of different lot sizes that we're providing, and this is pretty standard across the board with home builders, um, that work in master plan communities in terms of having a variety of different lot sizes, different price points, different lifestyle opportunities for families and singles and couples and so forth, so that we can encourage a broad diversity of, um, of folks to move into this community.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you so much. And, um, so finally, would most of the high-density stuff be to the north? And mostly, you know, the estates and so forth to the south?
Yeah, if you look at this map, all of these parcels to the south are in what's called the village neighborhood or the estate residential category. So all of these here, the tallest buildings would be thirty to thirty-five feet. Within the lighter areas, um, is the, the estate residential, those, let me, let me find that again. I think that's probably also thirty feet, but let me just confirm that. Thirty-foot maximum height for the.
I mean, the size of the lot, the bigger lots are south, and the higher densities, um, is, is right in here?
It, it does vary, but the darker brown colors and the yellow colors are the higher-density lots. So these are the smallest density units within the, the really, the light tan and the very light colored are the smallest, are the largest lots, the, the lowest density. And then the higher densities, the dark, the orange and the browns, those are the higher-density parcels which are much further to the north.
That's, I, I, I'll prove that.
Good, I'm glad. Um, I did wanna address one of the other, um, uh, la- ladies' comments about the drainage corridors. Uh, and this is a great exhibit to see that, so I just wanted to point out, all of the, all of the drainage is flowing from south to north. So, um, nothing is gonna be impacted, um, to the south in Estrella. The city requires us to make sure that whenever we do a subdivision, that we have no impact to off-site upstream or downstream uses. And so our engineers have done fairly detailed drainage analysis. There will be more detailed drainage analysis when we get to plating. But at the zoning stage, we looked at all the drainage corridors, and you can see there's some large drainage channels. These are two to three hundred feet wide drainage corridors that carry the off-site water through our site into the Gila River. Most of this site has been disturbed because a big chunk of it is already farmland. And so a lot of the drain, the natural drainage channels have already been modified. What we're trying to do in the southern areas is trying to maintain as much as we can in a natural condition, those wash corridors, and then channelize them through that farmland so that they, they end up in the Gila River where they all go anyway. But you can see, there's one here, um, at the, at the western edge, there's one kinda through the middle here. And then there's another large one here, um, that all ultimately dump, dump into the Gila River. Um, and so we're accommodating all of that water, um, with, with no impact to any off-site upstream or downstream properties.
Good, thank you.
Yes, Chris Cofield.
Hi, uh, my name's Chris Canfield, uh, Estrella resident for about five and a half years. Paul Frimmer's neighbor, the guy that was up here speaking before. We live right on the fence, hence our questions, so. Uh, was also told five and a half years ago, this is no one's fault in here, of course, that the land behind us would not be developed. So, um, my wife could not make the meeting tonight, and I would be in a lot of trouble if I didn't get real specific answers on certain things. So, um, I'd like to ask, and I know some of this is gonna be repetitive, you actually just covered this section right down here, the most, uh, what is that, south, the southernmost section there. Our homes are right between the little mountain that you see against the border of the development and, uh, between that little mountain and the wash. So we're right there. So again, so I can have very specific answers for my wife. You, I think, spoke about the lot size against the fence needing to be at least as big as the existing. Yeah, exactly. Okay, so what are those? Are those setbacks, or are those just areas where, again, the lots have to at least match the lots on the other side?
This, this area, these areas here that you see are a, a hundred-foot, what we're calling a buffer area. And what that buffer entails is that any lots within that hundred foot cannot be smaller than the lots immediately adjacent to the south. So as an example, these lot, I'm not sure which home yours is, it's probably in one of these two, or this is that hillside area.
That's right. Oh, yeah, right here.
So right in here. So these are seventy-foot wide lots.
Yeah.
And our lots within that first hundred feet cannot be any larger, any smaller than seventy feet wide.
Wide?
Correct.
So is this area, and, and I think the answer is no to this, but is this area a setback as well as that restriction? Or, I mean, are we gonna be, are we gonna have someone's backyard potentially now in our backyard?
The lots can be at our property line, but they can't be smaller than seventy feet. So, yeah, you will have lots, um, right on our property line. It looks like you actually have a little bit of a buffer on your site, if I'm reading this correctly, and I'm not sure if this map is entirely accurate.
It's just so.
But our lots would be basically just like yours, they would back up to the property line at a minimum of seventy foot wide. Whoever told you that you were gonna have open space lied, because this plan has been approved since two thousand and five.
No, no, like I said, I'm not blaming anyone. Probably had, Paul probably even too, had, um, overzealous real estate agents, you know? And, um, or they just didn't know any better. So, okay, so they'll be back.
I think we may have met your wife, uh, when we were out on the site. I, I think we did.
Really?
Yeah, because we were walking up that mountain, and she saw us, and she came out, and she's like, what are you guys doing? And we ended up talking to her for, for a little while, and, and we kind of explained what was going on, so. I don't know for sure if that was your wife, but it might've been.
Blonde and pretty, pretty can go on the record.
Might've been her, might've been her.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you. If you mind if I snap a picture of this?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Just one last quick question. When would, like, uh, like, okay, this is the lot, lot, the entire thing is, if, if this all gets approved, when would that be available to be seen, like, broken down by the lot?
So our first phase, um, is, and I'll try to circle this on the map here. Our first phase is, is east of this wash.
Yep.
Up to Cotton Lane, including this parcel and these parcels here. So it's basically this area right in here.
East of the wash, okay.
East of the wash. So it's not, our first phase is not adjacent to your home.
Yeah, right, it's close, right behind the custom homes.
And our first phase, if we're successful with our zoning, we would start pre-plating early twenty twenty-six. The pre-plat usually takes about six to eight months.
Okay.
Then we would go into final plat, that takes another eight months, so we're talking about a year and a half minimum to get our plating approved. And then we start construction.
Just to get started.
And then that takes another two years before the first home is ready for sale. Phase two will occur after these first thousand lots are sold, which might take five years to do. So it might be five to eight years before the next phase is ready for construction. We, we don't know what the, we, we hope it's faster than that, but it's gonna be based on market.
Do lots get sold, I'm just curious, do lots get put on the market immediately for all of it, or just for the sections that you plan on developing first? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, what happens is Harvard will do the plating.
Okay.
And then they will sell the final plats to builders.
Got it.
Then the builders will build the homes.
Okay.
And they usually won't, I, I'm not a builder, so I don't know exactly what their process is, but usually they're not selling homes until they've got model, models up. And that takes time. They have to build all the local streets, they build the parks, um, they put up the models, and then they start selling homes and lots for buyers.
Sort of go in the order.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, yeah, okay, good deal. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Yes?
While you're talking about phases, you mentioned phase one on the west side of Cotton.
Correct.
Are you gonna work phase two, three, four, how do you act more easternly, or are you gonna hop right up?
The question was regarding phasing?
Yeah, uh, phasing. So we don't, um, we have a, a tentative phasing plan, but the market's really gonna dictate, um, what happens. So as an example, if we find a buyer that wants to buy the land on the east side of Cotton Lane and develop it independent of what we're doing on the west side, we would entertain that idea. So it's possible we could have multiple phases going on, overlapping each other, depending on the market, depending on the buyers. So we really don't know. Our goal is to build this as quickly as we can, but it, this is gonna take at least twenty years probably to build out. It's a big project. Estrella's been building for twenty or so years, and they're not even having to build out.
I'm in Pebble Creek, and we've been building thirty years.
Thirty years, yeah.
For only six thousand homes, so.
Yep. My dad lives in Sun Lakes, and it's about thirty or forty years to build out. So it's a big project, it's a long-term project. There is a lot of interest in this project from a lot of builders. We're really excited about, um, what we're hearing from the builders and, and what Harvard is doing. It's, it's gonna be an incredible community, um, but it's gonna take a while to build out. So, um, there's only so many buyers that can buy homes at one time in one area. We don't wanna compete against ourselves, and so, you know, we wanna kinda take it methodical as we go forward. But the market's ultimately gonna decide how quickly this thing develops.
And you say the first home won't be for sale for twenty twenty-nine, four more years. You know, in that time, based on what Goodyear's doing now, there's gonna be another eight thousand residents in Goodyear on top of what we have now, so. So there's other, other things going on in, in all of Goodyear, so.
We wish we could do it quicker, but it just takes time. We wish we could do it quicker, but it just takes time.
While you're there, I have a question. I think a resort would be a great addition to the area. How likely is it that it would, one would go in in this development?
Yeah, great question. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know, that might be more of a question for Harvard. I don't think we've had any interest yet. That doesn't mean we won't. But I don't know if we, you know, until we get the zoning done, it's difficult to start marketing the property. And so, once the zoning's done and we start to really actively market the property as we're moving forward, then we'll learn more about the likelihood of a resort hotel in this particular area. But I don't really have, I can't give you a number, percentage of likelihood because I just don't know. And I'm not a market guy. It's a beautiful site, it would be a great place for one, I just don't know if it's the right place or not. So, we wanted to build it into our plan because it was something that the city indicated that they were interested in. And so, we certainly, you know, think it would be a great opportunity if there was interest in it. But, you know, the market's going to have to make that decision.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're closing the public hearing. Will the secretary please read the staff recommendation?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I already closed the meeting.
I already closed it?
Yeah, I closed the public hearing. Yeah, I didn't see any hands, so. I'm sure if it's a developer question, you could ask him after the meeting or when he gets ready to leave, so.
All right. So, as a reminder, we are having two votes. We will do the minor general plan amendment first and then the rezone. We will open another public hearing during the rezone. So, this first one, recommend approval for the request for a minor general plan amendment to the Goodyear twenty thirty-five general plan to amend the land use designation of approximately thirty-one acres, generally located west of Accessors Parcel Number four hundred dash oh-three dash zero-zero-two-C and south of Accessors Parcel Number five oh-two dash five-nine dash zero-zero-seven-A. From open space to neighborhoods requiring an amendment to exhibit three-point-three land use plan and transportation plan in chapter three of the Goodyear twenty thirty-five general plan and providing for an effective date. Sorry, there's a lot to read. Is there a motion for the staff recommendation or you can voice an alternate motion? Motion is on for the screen for the minor general plan amendment. I have a motion from Commissioner Hagadis. And a second from Vice Chair Sambito. The floor is open for commission discussion.
Want to have any comments? I think we've heard about everything we can. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I think this one's just to make it consistent across the board, so this is fairly minor.
Okay, call for the vote.
Please enter your vote. Okay, motion passes. Recommendation of approval will be forwarded to City Council for the December fifteenth meeting. And that was for the minor general plan amendment.
Okay, I'm going to open another public hearing. Agenda item number five is the Rio one-nine-zero-zero rezone, which was presented with the last item. Are there any speaker cards? You want to speak on this now, your question over here, sir? Sir?
Is it Tim?
I've got it open again.
Did you want to speak? And please just remind her to announce your name and if you're a Goodyear resident.
Yeah, Marcus Swindell, EMR resident. Just quickly, just wanted to know if this was touched on, that all of the dwellings, are they single-family units? Or are they going to be like townhouses or apartments? That's one of the questions.
There were some multifamily in there, is that correct? Yes.
So, how many multi-family units about?
Commissioner, so we don't have an exact number. Part of the concept that we have, and actually, I might have a table. Can anybody bring the spreadsheet? Or you have it in here. Actually, we have, we have a slide for it. Let me share this with you, I think. Okay, so here's a slide that, this is a, this is a, this is based on the land use concept that I was, that I had up on the screen earlier. So, you can look at the acreage for low density, single-family, medium density and high density and the total unit count. So, we've got about nineteen hundred units that are classified in the high-density category. And that can be anything from for-sale townhomes to cottage-style BTR projects, to garden-style apartments and anything in between. And those are, again, all in that village core area, in that higher-density core at the northern portion of the property. This is based on fifty-seven-hundred-and-sixty-two total lots. We don't think we're going to get there. We're not even sure we can get there based on the water allocation. So, these numbers were an early analysis of the maximum that we think we might be able to get before we negotiated the stipulations with staff on the water allocation. So, this table is already outdated, based on some early planning that we had done. So, it's likely that all of these unit categories are going to be reduced. I don't know by how much, but they will all be reduced because we're not going to be able to develop that much based on the water that we have. But it's hard to answer that question right now because we don't know exactly. We have an idea of which parcels are going to develop as multifamily. We don't know if they're going to be townhomes or apartments or cottages, and those all have different density requirements, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question that kind of came to mind as you were talking about the water allocation again? In my head, all this time I've been thinking, oh, you hit that water allocation and everything just kind of stops. But that's an evolution-type process. So, as you're going along, the team's kind of working with you, you see what's left. At some point, you just said you're not going to get to that number of units most likely. When you get closer, the final picture would evolve, would it not? So, you may say, oh, we have to go with more. At this point, we put too many multifamily, now we might have to go with more of the larger units just to, you want to develop the whole thing, right? Is that kind of how this is going to work?
Yeah, Commissioner, so we actually do, outside of the PAD that the city hasn't seen yet, we're already doing lotting studies for the project. We're doing not only phase one lotting studies, but we're doing lotting studies for the whole project to try to get a better sense of what we can actually get. And what we're finding is that the units that we're getting are far less than what this allocation is. This allocation in the spreadsheet was not part of the PAD, but it was done for internal use. And it's based on density projections, not based on actual design. And so, we always start with this because it gives us a sense of what we think we're dealing with at an absolute maximum. And most of our infrastructure studies are based on this higher number. So, when we do our traffic impact analysis, it's based on this higher number. When we do our water and sewer analysis for pipe sizes and lift stations, all of those things, it's based on this higher number because what we don't want to do is under-design a system and then be in real trouble when we're three-quarters done and we don't have capacity for anything. So, we typically over-inflate slightly of what we think the maximum is so that we make sure that we have the proper infrastructure at full build-out. And then, once we get the zoning and we start doing the design work, we kind of get a better sense of what we can actually get. And so, as we're going through that process right now, what we're finding is that the unit counts are going to be less than this anyway. And I think we have a general sense of how many units we can get based on the nineteen hundred acre feet. We don't know exactly, but we kind of know it's going to be around five thousand or somewhere in that ballpark. So, as we're doing our phasing, you know, we'll, we'll have a better picture as each phase goes so that we don't end up in a situation where we're at the last phase and we can't do anything. So, it's a process that we go through and we continue to work with the city. But we, it typically works out as we go through the process because we'll kind of know, are we ahead of schedule or behind schedule? And does that influence the lot sizes that we propose for this next phase and so forth?
Interesting.
Anyone else want to speak?
May I ask you one quick question? While you're still there. What's the average water usage for a household, say, of four people? Do you have any idea?
I think it's about four hundred and twenty gallons a day. Is that, no? Forty-one gallons a day. What is it?
Well, I was going to say that actually, City of Goodyear has prided itself and the mayor has said that, I think, the average for Goodyear has been ninety-six gallons per year.
Ninety-six a day?
And that does vary based on house size.
Right, I understand, I'm just looking at, say, average or, you know.
And there's just about sixty to seventy percent of most people's water usage is irrigation too. So, you know, people are planning, I think, less water.
And I'm not an expert in that area, so I apologize if I threw out a bad number.
No, that's, I was, I was going to say a hundred and twenty, but I don't know. I know it's gone down from ten years ago, I'm sure. Because of all the new equipment, you know, toilets and showers and things that use less water than we did before.
And we are providing a community pool. In fact, that's even in our document that we're required to do that, to try to discourage individual pools and have a nice community pool that residents can use, which is also a water-saving feature.
Okay, once again, public hearing is closed. Will the secretary please read the staff recommendation?
Recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately nineteen hundred forty acres, generally extending east to west from Estrella Parkway across Cotton Lane to approximately the alignment of one-hundred-and-eighty-seventh Avenue and north to south from Gila River to the northern edge of Estrella Residential Community, from King Ranch PAD to Rio nineteen hundred PAD as set forth in the draft of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash X X X X. Is there a motion for the staff recommendation or you can voice an alternate motion? I have a motion from Commissioner Nepomucino and a second from Commissioner Wang. Floor is open for commission discussion.
Well, I think it's, the concept certainly is nice, okay? Although I raised some issues before, but then, to me, water is the number-one issue. But since the staff said that the stipulation is only nineteen hundred acre feet, so, at least there's a limitation to it, you know? We can estimate what, how many units that can support in our own, you know? So, and a lot of it is long-term, so, so a lot of it is unknown. Although, right now, I could say that even the staff would agree with me that, because they wrote it, that the increased cost in city services may not be fully supported by the anticipated revenue from this project. But that's years down the road, so I won't worry about that. But the concept is nice here, that, I think it's nice that this will include a nice walking trail, which benefits a lot of people. It will attract a lot of people to the area. And so, I think as they go along, a lot of, some of this, a lot of these issues will be addressed along the way. So, I have no qualms about it.
Yeah, I think if we were going from agriculture, different zoning, to rezone for more places, it'd be hard to say, yes, let's keep adding places, but it's already zoned for housing and this is beautiful. And I would rather have something that looks as nice as this than what was approved in two thousand and five, long before I was here.
Anyone else? I'd call for the other one.
Great. Please enter your vote. Motion passes. Recommendation of approval will be forwarded to City Council for the December fifteenth meeting.
And remember, the City Council is going to take another shot at this and they get the final vote, so. Okay, agenda item number six is zoning ordinance text amendment. Going to open the public hearing. Guadalupe Ortiz Cortez is here to present. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commission Members. Guadalupe Ortiz Cortez, Principal Planner.
Just hang on a second.
Yeah, you want to give it a moment?
Had a, had a dog in the fight, so to speak.
Could you please take your conversation outside? Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, Commission Members. Guadalupe Ortiz Cortez, Principal Planner. Before you this evening is a zoning ordinance text amendment that addresses state legislation that was approved in the last year, which impacts middle housing, accessory dwelling units and objective standards. With the passage of House Bill twenty-seven twenty-one, staff created a middle housing overlay district to permit middle housing, that is townhouses, duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes in any lot zone for single-family residential and located within proximity of the city's downtown area, G S Q. The photos shown on the screen are from residential projects already existing within proximity of our downtown that currently provide middle housing and density around our downtown. This legislation also encourages new development communities to include middle housing in their projects. Currently, the city permits accessory dwelling units. However, they are not permitted within the territory of the vicinity of a public airport. And within this text amendment and in compliance with new legislation, ADUs will be permitted within the vicinity of a public airport, that is Phoenix Goodyear Airport, but will not be applicable to Luke Air Force Base or military airports. House Bill twenty-seven forty-seven requires municipalities provide objective design guidelines. This text amendment allows the zoning administrator to publish addendums to the city's design guidelines manual to clarify standards where needed and ensure that we're in compliance with state law. Additionally, we have clarified definitions to assist in compliance with new legislation. Staff recommends the planning commission forwards a recommendation of approval to the City Council. This text amendment will be presented to the City Council on December fifteenth. And if approved, it will become effective immediately. I am available for any questions.
So, if Luke wasn't there, this could really apply to a lot of area.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Anyone else have any comments for staff? Okay, are there any speaker cards?
I've not received any for this item.
Any one of the two people in the audience wish to speak? Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to close the public hearing. Would the secretary please read the recommendation?
Absolutely. Recommend approval of a request to amend Articles One, Two, Eight and Nine of the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance as set forth in the draft of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash X X X X. Is there a motion for the staff recommendation or you can voice an alternate motion? I have a motion from Commissioner Nepomucino, a second from Commissioner Hagadis. Floor is open for commission discussion.
Anything?
No comment.
Sounds good. Call for the vote.
All right, let's do it. Please enter your vote. Motion passes. Recommendation of approval will be forwarded to City Council for the December fifteenth meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I guess I hope the next one includes that parking issue, okay?
The only issue of business tonight is to recognize Commissioner Sambito as she concludes her service to the Planning and Zoning Commission after this meeting. Commissioner Sambito has been part of the commission since two thousand and twenty-two and has taken part in the review and recommendation of many significant development projects that will shape our city for years to come. And thank you very much, Maria. And as I said before, it was fabulous work and we enjoyed it. We're going to miss you. Are there any staff communications?
Thank you, Chairman. Just an update that the use permit for the Walmart gas station that this commission considered last month was approved by council at their regular meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, the next planning and zoning commission meeting will be held on January the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. My guess, at six P M. at the Goodyear City Hall. Council chamber is right here. No further business. Have a good night.